Going to call our regular board meeting to order Thursday, December 12. My thing just went out. Catherine, roll call, please.
Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Goff?
Here.
Trustee Baldini?
Here.
Trustee Rios?
Here.
Student trustee Leon?
Here.
And I see that Jeff Dodd is absent.
He's on the way.
On the way. Trustee Segura?
Here.
And trustee Iverson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next is pledge of allegiance. Trustee Goff, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is item 2.3, adoption of the agenda. There has been a change. We are pulling item 3.2, emeritus status classified and administrative confidential. That will come back next month with corrections. So with that change, do I have a...
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Rios and a second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda has been adopted. Alright, next is our acknowledgement of classified retirees. And I do want to acknowledge, I think we have Lance Thompson out here. Wanted to acknowledge Lance and his 34 years of service as an instructional support specialist. And I was going to ask if you had a few words, but it looks like Bob's going to come up first, so...
I do. Thank you, trustee Iverson. Board members, 1985, I graduated law school. The newly re-elected Ronald Reagan met the newly-installed Mikhail Gorbachev. Gasoline was $1.09 an hour and postage was $0.22 for first-class envelope. Coca-Cola was introduced, New Coke, and then killed it shortly thereafter. Microsoft introduced Windows version 1.0. On the radio, you heard Madonna, and at the movies, Back to the Future, which is appropriate because that is the year that Lance Thompson started full-time at Napa Valley College. Lance has touched the lives of generations of Nappans, and if you employ a carpenter, or see a nurse, or travel a bridge that has been inspected by a Napa Valley College graduate and who needs to understand the math and the dynamics of stresses on metal, and all of those people and the math that they need to know to do their jobs, it's because of Lance. And if they got it wrong, it's because they weren't Lance's students. And so it is my pleasure to recognize Lance for his 34 years of service at Napa Valley College and congratulate him on a well-earned retirement, and he tells me he doesn't want to say a word which astonishes all of us. Congratulations, Lance.
Thank you, Bob. Thank... Let's keep going in and out. Thank you for everything you've done over your years of service. I also wanted to acknowledge... Oh, no.
Go ahead, and then I'll...
Oscar?
Who's first? No, no. We just catch your attention.
Can I speak about Lori Barron?
No, go, please.
Okay. Thank you. Unfortunately, Maria Vie Gomez, senior dean, could not be here tonight to recognize Lori Barron, who has been here 20.8 years. But in her long tenure at MVC in the Writing Success Center, Lori Barron was deeply invested in student success and went out of her way to make students feel comfortable and safe. She treasured getting to know students through tutoring and was instrumental in planning the center's events, including poetry readings and writing contests for our students. She herself is an accomplished poet and performance speaker, radio announcer, and it was a treat for all to hear her read her poems. Her most recent writing was on the fires in Sonoma County that personally affected her mother and herself, who waded out the fires in a shelter. Her gentle and nurturing presence will be missed, but we wish her the best in her retirement travels.
Oscar, did you have...
It was just to catch your attention about Fay.
Oh. I do want to, for the record, I want to acknowledge all of our classified retirees. So Lori Barron, instructional support specialist, 20.8 years of service. Hubert Crawford, custodian, 22 years of service. Linda Hunter, who I understand had a really good party today. Accounting technician, 38.2 years of service. 38.2 years of service. It's amazing. Catalina Martinez, senior administrative assistant, 21.2 years of service. Laura Rodriguez, financial aid specialist, 23.8 years of service. Jan Chard, DSPS specialist, 37.6 years of service. And Lance, again, 34 years of service. So thank you to all of our classified employees. And Marty, did you have something you wanted to add, or...
No, they made it to the finish line, and I hope I make it, too.
Alright, well, thank you, everybody. 3.2, this is emeritus status classified and administrative confidential. Oh, we do have, we pulled that one. Yeah. Yeah. Public comment on closed session. 4.1, closed session, public comment and guidelines. Following any public comment regarding closed session items, the board will go immediately into closed session and consider and/or take actions upon closed session items. Do I have anyone in the public wishing to speak on closed session items? I do not. Conference with labor negotiations, we're going to be discussing, and that is it. That's 5.1. So at this point, I'm going to adjourn public comment right now, or closed, we're going to enter closed session. Oh, sorry, 5:28. There is nothing to report out of closed session. So we are going to 6.1, announcement of items from closed session. There's nothing. Next is public comment. This is general. This is the public comment opportunity. It's governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to listen to concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to listen to community input. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the board of trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. Do I have any, I don't have any cards here. This is an agenda item, isn't it?
No, no. So I would say it's my pleasure to introduce Kathy Gillis and the PTK, who have submitted a card, so using this opportunity to present part of their annual project and for the board's entertainment and edification.
Hi, everyone. Most of you know me pretty well. Thank you again for your support. I have some wonderful students here who I have been very impressed by this year, and I think they are going to achieve great things, and they've worked with some of our staff and administration here at the college, and so they want to present this to you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Anal Shad. I'm the executive vice president of the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. So just a little briefing of what Phi Theta Kappa is. It's an international honor society which helps students to get to their full potential, where they reach, where they use their leadership skills and their soft skills and express to the community of how much potential they have. So they usually use the four hallmarks, which is leadership, fellowship, services, and scholarships. And our goal for this semester for the students is to go out in the community to reduce the carbon footprinting in the world as well as on campus. So I would like my colleague, Josefa, to come and introduce our college project.
Good evening, board. Great to be back. Currently, I'm the vice president of college project of PTK, the chapter on campus. So our project revolves around water renewables, water resources, and some sort of thing that has to do something with water. So our plan that we discussed with Dr. Kraft, along with having reviewed by our advisor, Kathy Gillis, was to build or replace water filter stations on campus. So those are the water filter stations that you put your bottle in and it fills, you know, directly. Yes, right. So we did a survey to check what are responses of students, faculty, and staff, even administrators, you know. So I think you might have that booklet in front of you, the survey. If you could open to the front page. So we got 219 responses within a couple of days through email, and on the first page, you will see, you know, a list of some of the people who responded to the survey. Well, you can't see all of that because it's printed, but I have the whole list. If you go down, it will give you what the first question was, was basically, what, you know, what is your status at the college? Are you a full-time student? Are you a part-time student, you know, administrator, staff, even a trustee answered that survey, and I thank you. And so 52.5% were full-time students who answered the survey. 31.1% were part-time students. 7.3% were faculty members. 6.8% were staff members, administrators, then trustee, then a support for a special needs student, which was in another option they could put in. If you go down, it says, "How long have you been at MVC?" Whether you've been a student, faculty, staff member, administrator, or a trustee. And so 55.3% of respondents said that they stayed here at MVC from one to three years, which is, you know, common. Then we have 14.6% answering about 35 years. And then 10.5%, as you can see on your graphs, for more than five years. If you go down, you will see a question, yes or no, or maybe, which says, "Does the college have adequate water refilling stations?" 74.4% of respondents said no. Well, 14.6% said maybe, and 11% said no. Sorry, yes. And then further down, if you go, there's another question that said, "Would you prefer having more refilling stations across campus?" And an astounding 95% said yes. If you go further down, you would find bar charts. I think it's on your next page. Bar charts would say, "Where would you like to see those refilling stations?" And so there are a bunch of options that we gave, but we also gave the option to put in their own, you know, place wherever they wish to see that station. And so 180 respondents chose the campus library, which is that 1700 building. Then we have the writing center, then we have the math success center. So the fourth chart, the fourth bar on your bar chart, is actually success center, the math center, which is kind of hard to see, but the fourth chart from this top down is the writing success center. And then they have percentages in parentheses to the sides. So the top choice was obviously the library. And then we also gave the option, if the respondents wanted to let us know if there's any suggestions they have, or if there's anything other that they would like to let us know, because obviously, you know, we were going to be presenting at the board of trustees, and I think you can see some of those suggestions. If you would like, I have the whole list of all the suggestions, and we can definitely forward that to you. And then 58.9% of respondents at the end of the survey said that they would like to stay informed about the process and completion of the project. We did have several meetings with Dr. Kraft and with the facilities head, Matt Christensen, and it proved very fruitful, but I will not go into that because my colleague will go into that. So if there's any questions, I don't know if we can answer, but we will move forward. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Melita Pullman, and I am the VP of Communications. And today I'll be talking about, I think you guys have it, it's like a chart that has the bottle filling stations. The first category talks about priority. The first main priority would be the 1700 building, which is the library. And then on the column, just basically numbers off from one to five, and one being the main priority, five being the less important priority. And then the next column, it talks about the location. So PAC would be the Performing Arts Center. SAC would be the Student Activity Center. 1500 buildings over there, yeah. And the next column talks about existing, basically, water stations. And the next column will talk about the option of what we can use to replace these existing water stations. And then the next column talks about the estimated cost for the water bottle stations. In total, the estimated cost would be $14,750. And that includes installment, basically the replacement of the filters, and also just overall the cost of the machine itself. So for the filtered replacement costs, it costs about $120 each. It replaces over about 3,000 gallons for every, basically, 3,000 gallons. And the next column, it talks about the discounted price. And with the help of Matt, we basically found all these information about the chart, and it talks about, I think we're down to $10,025, $10,025 for the discounted price.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Luis Ambreeze, and I am the VP of Community Service. We believe that this, we believe that this project has a lot of room for success. Current students, faculty, and staff will benefit from this by having access to higher-quality water and at the same time, reducing the amount of water being wasted and reduce the amount of number of plastic water bottles being used. If this project proves to be successful, phase two of this project will be to install the same water filtering stations to other facilities that lack it. Unfortunately, we, the students, are not enough to make this happen. However, we can provide you guys with solid feedback, price estimates, and resources to make this, to build a strong foundation to make this happen. What we ask from the board of trustees is to have your guys' support so that we can make this happen together. Thank you.
So I don't know if, being a public comment section, if there's any questions I can be?
We really can't, you know, otherwise it becomes an agenda item. So I guess I would just default to chair, but I'll thank you first, to say it's really an honor for us to hear how students are so active. You're spot on with this kind of report, and I think we applaud your efforts. Maybe we applaud your efforts on purpose, right? We could do that, right? So I'm going to applaud you, right? Here we go.
Thank you for coming. I just want to share, it's very, this is impressive activism, so thank you, guys. Next, we are moving on to more public comment. Do I have anyone else out there wishing to speak? Okay. Next, we're moving to our annual organizational items. This is nomination and election of board officers. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kraft.
Thank you. This is an annual organizational meeting, and as secretary to the board, part of, part of my job in this portion is to run the, run the election. We have, over the years, developed a very precise protocol with process and steps. So I'll be working that through. The board generally has copies of all of this before, and I think, are these posted as well? No, it's okay. They're protocols, so they don't have to be. You can find the protocol itself on the, on the board site, which is, which is posted. So we will now move to agenda item 8.1, nomination and election of board officers. Ed code 72,000, as well as board policy 2210 require the board elects its officers at its annual organization meeting in December, this one. Thank you, Kathy. The district has two board officer positions. The first is president, the second is vice president, both of whom take office January 1st, 2020. Before making nominations, this is still kind of a process, there's an opportunity for public comment on the election of officers. After that, trustees may ask questions and make comments. That's the one section of this. After that, there will be nominations for the office of president, followed by voting. Once the prez is elected, then we move on to vice president nominations, etc. State law and board policy allow any member to nominate a trustee for president, with or without providing reasons for making the nomination. Any trustee may nominate oneself and any other trustee, including the student trustee, who may second the nomination. That, to be clear on that, the student trustee may second nominations, but not be an officer, right? When there are no more nominations that are seconded, there will be a motion to close nominations. Votes will be cast in the same sequence as nominated. The first nominee to receive a majority of votes, in this case four, will be elected to the position of president. If no person receives a majority on the first ballot, then we will, we will start rebaloting and eliminate that person. If there's only one nominee, then that person is declared president. No vote will be taken. Then we move on to vice president in the same fashion. So, section two, public and board comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the election of board officers? This is public comment. And seeing no hands out there, I will assume there is none. Are there any members of the board of trustees now, this is a different section, who would like to offer general comments before board nominations? Okay, we're letting that pass as well. So let's move to the, now we'll move to nominations for the office of presidents. So nominations are now open to the trustees for the office of president, who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for the office. So somebody needs to raise their hand, and I will recognize them for a nomination. Somebody must nominate somebody.
I'm going to jump out and nominate myself to continue as chair.
Okay, so I will now read this, right? Board, board member Kyle Iverson has nominated Kyle Iverson, who wishes to second the nomination.
I'll second that.
Okay. So and you, and Catherine's capturing these. Do you have any comments that you want to share with the board regarding your nomination?
I just, I feel like it takes a year to really learn this role and do a good job, and at this point, I just look forward to having your support, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay. I'm continuing on script, right? Kyle Iverson is nominated to be board president, who wishes to be recognized to make another nomination. Yes, Rob?
Nominate Rosara Segura.
Okay. Are there any other further nominations? Okay. Seeing no further nominations, there's, is there a motion to close nominations?
Need a second, right? Second, so second the nomination.
Yes. Oh, thank you so much. I'm so sorry. I missed that. So we have a second, right? Okay, now it's your turn, right? Do you have any comments you would like to share regarding your nomination?
Well, thank you very much for your support and for the second and the nomination. I think I'm good for the board. We work very well together, and I think that we all share the same responsibility when making decisions about the district, and most importantly about, we all want student success, and that's what we're working for. I just would like the opportunity to serve as your president. More than prepared to do so.
Thank you. Okay, and I went out of order, so now I'll close nominations for president. Thank you. Okay, and now time to vote for candidates for the office of president. The election will be made by raising of your hands, right? A raised hand is a vote for a candidate. Candidates will be voted on in order that they were nominated. The first candidate who receives a majority, which is four, will be elected as president. The following members were nominated, Kyle Iverson and Rosara Segura. So all in favor of Kyle Iverson, please raise your hand at this time, and then I'll count, I'll count. Two, two. I see two. Thank you. No majority has been raised. All in favor of Rosara, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Alright, that would be a majority, and that closes it. Congratulations, you are president.
Thank you.
If only Washington could run like this, alright. Nominations are now open for trustee for the office of vice president. Who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for vice president? So this will be raising your hand, and then I will call on you, and then you can nominate somebody for vice president.
I would like to nominate trustee Baldini.
Okay. Who wishes to second that nom?
I will second.
Okay. And do you have any comments?
Is there a rule, you have to accept a nomination?
Yeah. Do you have any comments?
I've turned down one before.
I just want to make sure that there's comments.
I've turned down one before.
You have, yeah.
Yes. I have turned down one before, so I accept it. Thank you. I think you need a second, though. Oh, we have.
I think we got a second, and that was, do you want to have any other comments, Michael, or?
That's the extent of my comments. Thank you for your support.
Okay. Michael Baldini is nominated to be vice president, who wishes to be recognized to make another nomination.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Baker.
Okay. Are there, and we'll just, we'll do that. So is there a second for that, please?
I'll second.
Okay. And Jennifer, do you have any comments regarding your nomination?
Girl power.
Girl power. Okay. Any further nominations? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
Okay. Second. Okay, we'll take that as pass. Nominations, all in favor of closing that nom. We good? Yes, alright. Okay, the board will now proceed to vote for the candidates for office of vice president. Elections will be made by raising hands. A raised hand is a vote for the candidate. First candidate to receive a majority will be elected vice president. Following members were nominated, Michael Baldini and Jennifer Baker. All in favor of Michael Baldini, please raise your hand at this time. One, two, three, four. That is actually a majority. So congratulations, Michael. You are, you are vice president. So board officers, for 2:20, the record will show Rosara Segura as president, and Michael Baldini is vice president. Good. Alright, so let's continue on. The way that we, the actual chair hands off at next... The way that we, the, the, the actual chair hands off at next meeting, so the, the chair tonight continues to chair this meeting, so, um, it's back in, in your ball court now.
Dr. Kraft, for a little, this is my first time going through this process. Not to say it was a little, just to be totally clear, a little uncomfortable, uh, to kind of go through it, and I, and, and just being someone here, kind of the, for trustee, like trustee Goff, kind of the first year, you'll be very helpful to see, and I should have asked for this earlier, but I just wasn't expecting this. Is it just maybe to see, the, uh, trustee Baldini said, you know, he turned it down once before, but just to see kind of the history of, you know, who would, uh, who would do it. I just, you know, my examples, and, and, you know, at the county board of supervisors at various counties, is they traditionally do a rotating, um, chair. And there is a formal nomination process, very formal, like that, and going through that, uh, a process, but I, I, I kind of like that idea about having a, a rotation, or it's, uh, um, you know, sometimes things happen where, you know, the votes don't always go in that direction, but, um, some sort of consistency where you're expecting it, you can prepare in terms of vice chair going to chair of president, uh, you know, vice president, president, so on and so forth. I thi, I think that would be helpful, so something maybe to keep in mind, um, down the road.
We could, I mean, and...
Let me just noodle on it, I guess, a little bit.
Yes, no, 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 it's fine. We can come back to, um, so a future board agenda item, probably later in the year, but could be to, to review this process. Um, many boards rotate automatically. Some boards, as, as we would know, have the chair in perpetuity. I mean, they have been chair, they never change. Twenty years, the chair is the chair. I think maybe San Diego is that way. Um, Grossmont Quiemaco was that way, I think eighteen years as chair. Um, and it was, um, there are some advantages to that...
Yeah.
And disadvantages to that. Um, so we could come, come back to that. As a matter of course, anything the Napa County Supervisors do, I want to avoid. But generally speaking, I like the idea, so, yeah. Yes, exactly. But I think that would be a good thing to bring back. If, um, if the board is up for that, we, we could certainly bring back that notion, um, before we get to the next year. Yeah, Michael?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just, uh, a little bit more information. At one time, board trustees had a college that had a Sergeant Pat Barnes position, which was, which was eliminated by the board, and we also had a, a, a rotation, and then the board policy was changed with, uh, what is, was the process this evening.
Hmm.
So, but...
When was that, Michael? I mean, how many years ago, right?
I didn't have as much gray hair.
Yeah?
It was probably at least ten years.
Mm-hmm. It was I, after, before me?
Yes.
So it had to be, yeah, ten years, yeah.
And, sorry, not to belabor this topic too much, but something I've always thought was also very cool, but I think it's a rotary thing, or kawanas, but something that they have is they have kind of immediate past president or something like that, so you do kind of have that, uh, continuity, and, um, you know, Kyle was talking, or trustee Iverson was talking about, you know, it takes kind of one year to, to really get up to speed, so I'd just throw another, uh, uh, card in there for consideration, yeah. That's what I do, no, no answers or conclusions, just, uh, just thoughts.
The, um, I can help guide you a little on the next section here. So the eight point four is appoint trustee members to district auxiliary services and, um...
Excuse me, did we miss the calendar?
Yeah, we haven't done calendar. Are we?
I'm sorry. I was... Well, let me see.
At a...
Yes, you're right.
Eight point two.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, 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 I was gonna explain something a little different, but yes. Catherine's got the calendar, right? So you need to take a look.
So this is item eight point two, twenty-twenty board meeting calendar.
Uh, walk us through the couple, there's a couple things that we had made changes on, Catherine.
Yeah, so we've added a special meeting, uh, on the sixteenth, and that is primarily to have a human resources document to get, uh, any faculty hired up who need to begin teaching the following week.
And...
And we expect to have a study session on housing. Um, we're going to be working out the details of that.
Let me unpack a little more, and we, you know, we, we talked about a little bit, we felt, cabinet talked about this, we felt a little uncomfortable bringing, um, everything on the twenty-third to you about housing, even if you would have had significant time to look at the package. So having that special meeting where you could unpack it a little bit, at least a week before with the materials, gives you more time for reflection, more time for input from the community and faculty, staff, administrators. So that's the reason for this special, in addition to the HR pieces. And then on the twenty-third is, um, the regular meeting where we would, you know, walk through and you would approve contracts, et cetera.
Okay, and then, uh, further down, we have April twenty-third, that's the fourth Thursday, and that was related to...
We pushed this back, knowing that we have two significant hires of administrators, and that if it, we gave us a little more leeway to work with committees, potentially get, you know, potentially have the board start to look at, um, approval, if everything works completely right, it would be wonderful to have a, um, a candidate for our vice president, you know, approved that evening, but it certainly couldn't happen early in April, so we pushed the, the April meeting as far as we could to just give us some latitude, that's, that's the goal, at least.
And then we had on, the others are normal, then we have July eighteenth, which is a Saturday, Saturday morning, and that would be a special meeting visit to Mount Veder, field trip.
This is the one you get to poll if you want, right? You wanted, remember, we, there was a lot of excitement about traveling up to Mount Veder and exploring. Now that it's on paper and you have to give up a Saturday morning, you may want to think again, but we have to, we have to note it, and, uh, you know, have the, you know, post it and do all the stuff.
Does it have to be in the morning?
No, it doesn't have to be in the morning. Good plan. It could be...
You don't want to see sunrise, that's the whole...
Yeah, sunrise on Mount Veder, right? Um, good point. Yes, we, we could eliminate the, the morning there and, and have it at a more decent time. Yeah, Levinish, brunch on Mount Vider's.
I'd just say, I like the morning, it doesn't cut my day in half, I can get up there and we get our meeting done.
You're not pinned down here yet, so as, as we move along.
Okay, and then, uh, you will note later on, the last meeting of the year is December seventeenth, that's the third Thursday. That's to allow for a change in the law, where the, any new trustees elected would take office on the second Friday, which is after our usual meeting date. So we do have elections coming up in twenty-twenty for three of you, and if we have any of, uh, any new people, then they would be taking office. And so that's why we moved that meeting forward by a week.
Everybody good? Uh, all right.
So we'll adopt this, right?
Do I have a motion, or do we have to go through that process?
Yeah, we're gonna adopt it, yeah.
So move.
Motion by trustee Baldini, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, was that trustee Goff or trustee Segura? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Board meeting calendar is unanimous. Uh, eight point three, appoint trustee members to board committees.
So this is what I was addressing, um, Rosara is the, is the chair, so at, at this point, these, these items pass to kind of chair, the chair-elect, to kind of, um, walk through these, so it's...
So we would go through them, uh, when I officially take the presidency, or do we go now?
No, I mean, I, that, that's a, that's a little bit, no, I think you can do that tonight. I mean, you know, in terms of, you know, as chair-elect, you know, a, a point, you need action items on these, but, um, but, or you can delay this until you, um, are seated as prez in January, and just announce what you would like to do there.
Well, because what I had worked out is, um, the legislative affairs, I had Goff, Iverson, and Dodd.
Dodd?
Mm-hmm. Add it in finance, um, I would like to remain on that. Uh, I think that we've been, Jennifer and I and Pablo have been through the budget, and there are some decisions that we are ready to make, and I, I really wouldn't want to deviate from that because we have the background on, on what's coming up the pike, and so I would like to keep it the same way. Um, McPherson would be Goff, real property would be Baldini, Rios, and Iverson. And Pablo, if you would like to stay on that.
Yeah, that would be great to stay on that committee.
Okay. And Das, I, um, I was appointing, um, Jennifer Baker, and I would stay on the W, on the BWT.
So, um, eight point four, you're, for the D, for Das, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Baker, I'm hearing, and for VWT, was, I'm sorry?
I would remain on that.
Okay. Segura. Okay. Then we are, you don't need action item on these, but you, but there's certainly discussion which you should have now.
I'll call you vice president, I guess.
Absolutely.
I mean, I've, I've enjoyed sitting on the, the real property, uh, committee, and I think, you know, trustee Rios, and I'm, and Baldini, when you've, uh, been there, uh, so I'm, I'm enjoying, but I, I don't know if it's possible to switch that out, or for the worth of, I just would like to offer that, I'm very happy and will serve the pleasure of the president, or whatever, uh, would like for you to do, but, um, you know, in terms of, I don't know if it's possible to, if anyone else was interested in, and who's appointed on the real property committee now to move over to, uh, legislative affairs, or I'm happy to serve on both of those, but, um, did want to put that forward.
Okay.
And happy to, you know, reach a decision in January, if that's more appropriate.
I actually would, uh, I've sat on the legislative now for quite some time, and would rather give that up to someone else if they're on it. Wouldn't mind going back to the real property committee, it's been a while on, off of that one. But... Maybe it's best to table it and bring it back?
I think so, too.
Yes, we could, but...
We could roast him both.
Oh, you're legis, you're a legislator, right? Yeah. Okay, can, let me come back with that on, on, on January.
All right. So we can move forward on the, a couple things is what I'm hearing, right? And I'm acting now as the board secretary, that's why you're hearing me insert my way in, in this, in this piece. So for eight, for trustees to board committees, you've tabled some, and you'll come back with, with solid pieces next month. Eight point four, district auxiliary services, you're appointing Baker...
Correct.
Which will go that, to that board then for the ca, do we do, do we do calendar year, or do we do academic year for that? Do you know? For that, for Das and the viticulture? I can't answer that question tonight.
That was my question, is do I stay on for the next Das meeting in December?
It's a good question, I'm not sure, is it? Do you remember, Bob, are you thinking?
I thought it was on a calendar year basis.
Me too, that's my recollection, that's what I'm, I'm considering. We'll get back, back to you, but I know what the board would like to, a board chair wants to do, so we'll, with, you're both, you're thinking you would like to do that on district auxiliary services, that's what I'm seeing you? Okay, great. Not till it be January? Right, okay. Okay, then I, I think for that section, we were complete, and then we would turn it back over to you, Kyle.
So does that, that takes care of eight point five, was that all done? Okay.
Yes.
So, next is...
I need a vote.
Oh.
Uh, just on those, on those two seats for, for viticulture and, um, and Das, yeah. Because they're, they're actually board seats, so I, I do need a note, motion to vote.
So with the changes to Das to go into effect the first of the year?
Yes.
With VWT, can we do them together? Das and VWT appointments to those...
So move.
Record, yeah.
So move.
Motion by trustee Baldini, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Goff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, perfect.
Motion carries unanimous. All right, now we are moving on to reports, nine point one, academic senate report. Dr. Eileen Tahada, president.
Good evening. Well, I have, um, um, a few things to report as I finish my first semester as academic senate president. The first is that we have, um, started a tradition of highlighting, um, the achievements of faculty outside of their teaching, and I'd like to share several of them, with your faculty are doing some fabulous things, and I sometimes think that we miss, um, we miss some of what we do. So I'd like to highlight tonight, uh, Tia, uh, Dr. Tia Madison is the founding board of the Sassoon Harbor Theater. She's entering into her fifth season, and she has a new play debuting this month, which she is directing and writing. The name of the play is No Room. Paul Wagner, um, has a third edition of his wine marketing and sales book, which he co-authors with Liz Thack and Janine Olson. It was published this year by Board and Bench Publishing. When it was released, it won a Gorman International Prize for the Best Wine Book for Professionals. Um, this September, um, his new book, Wine Sales and Distribution, which he co-authors with John Croats and Byron Marlowe, will be published by Ro, Roman and Littlefield. And then, um, just in time for the holiday season, he says, the, uh, the teaching company released his new set of lectures through their Great Courses program called The Instant Summer, Choosing Your Best Wine. It's a series of eight introductory lectures on world, on the world of wine appreciation. We have Coach Randy Simmons and Nadine Wade, um, who worked, um, with a domestic violence and sexual abuse, formerly Napa Emergency Women's Services, um, to create Storm Against Violence, which is, which, whose goal is to break the cycle of sexual violence in one generation using the medium of sport. Nadine and Coach Bailey are presenting these outcomes, um, at a national conference this year. Janet Stickman has released, um, her book, To Black Parents, Visiting Earth, Raising Black Children in the Twenty-First Century. It was released in February of this year, and it's still available. Let's see. And then Iris Dunkel was the poet laureate for the Sonoma, for Sonoma County, um, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen. Um, she has published three poetry books, Gold Passage, um, which was selected by Ross Gay to win the Trio Award, There's a Ghost in This Machine of Air in two thousand and fifteen, and Interrupted Geographies in two thousand and seventeen. For the past five years, she's also been researching and writing, um, the first full-length biography on Charmaine Kittredge London, Jack London's wife, and it will be published by the University of Oklahoma Press in October of two thousand and twenty, and I actually have more on Iris later on. But I wanted to showcase these faculty, to let you know just how fabulous, um, the faculty is, the work that we do, as well as, in addition to our teaching, um, these kinds of projects actually enhance our students' experience because we can go back into the classroom and share firsthand experience on these kinds of things. So thank you for indulging me tonight and letting me share those. In addition to this, I would like to, um, report that the senate in business session approved the Flex Day agenda. And I just want to, um, remind everybody that, um, according to the chancellor's, um, guidelines, Flex Day is the sole purview of the faculty through the academic senate. And so, um, we just want to make a note of that, um, and to understand that boundary, that we are bound by the chancellor's guidelines. That wasn't anything that we came up with, um, and we need to continue to honor that. That's not to say that faculty, um, are opposed to opening Flex Day to other constituent groups and to address the professional development needs of other constituent groups. In fact, it has been a tradition at Napa Valley College that the Professional Development Committee actually does that. So, um, again, we're happy to report that we have a Flex Day agenda, um, for January. Also, the academic senate in business session approved a bylaws amendment to include an educational technology committee as part of the senate structure. This will be, um, it says this was its first reading, we'll have our second reading in February, and the intention here is that we will have a liaison to the DTEC committee so that we can be in constant communication about the instructional technology needs of the campus. The academic senate continues to... The Academic Senate continues to review board policy, the board policy approval flow chart and process in consultation with the Office of the President to ensure that it reflects current practice, and so we're working on that. We will be assessing this process to evaluate its efficacy in addressing and resolving the accreditation team's recommendations 10 and 11. And again, this has been a wonderful opportunity to collaborate with the Office of the President, with Dr. Kraft and with Catherine, who has been committed, devoted, and has also helped us steer this flow chart and so forth. So I really appreciate working with them. Let's see. We are in conversation with the Office of Academic Affairs and the Union to resolve issues concerning violations and duplication of efforts that are, we're finding in the administrative evaluation. And we are much encouraged by our conversations with the Vice President, interim Vice President Fay Smiley on this issue. And I think we are both committed to resolve this in at least the beginning of next semester, so we'll have an opportunity to do that. I think that's all for tonight. I just want to say that it continues to be an honor and a privilege to serve faculty in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eileen Tahada. Next up, nine point two, Administrative Confidential Senate Report. Mr. Robert Harris.
Thank you, Chair Iverson. Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. This semester, the deans and some other administrators have been engaging in what we call a deans exchange with other colleges. And what that entails is visiting other colleges, and we hope to bring other folks on our campus to exchange ideas, learn, and discuss best practices with folks of our, folks of the same administrative level from other districts and see how things are done on those areas. Earlier this semester, we visited Evergreen College in San Jose. And the highlight of that is they have a wonderful partnership with Tesla. So we need to have a Tesla manufacturing plant here in Napa. So that was wonderful. And then just earlier this week on Monday, a group went over to visit College of Marin and to view their facilities and the way they do businesses, the business of academic administration. So it was a very nice, very nice exchange, and we look forward to doing that next semester and bringing folks here on campus. On behalf of the Administrative Senate, or as the Administrative Senate President, I'd like to wish and extend our best wishes to our colleague Diana Shabody, who will be departing us as an administrator at the end of next week, I believe. She has left her mark in all the best possible ways, and we will miss her in our meetings and with her wise and the wisdom which she gives us. We know she won't be far, but we will miss you, Diana, in our meetings. And I'll miss laughing with you in the corner. And finally, the Administrative Senate would like to offer our best wishes to everyone for a wonderful holiday season, and we look forward to working together in the spring 2020 and beyond to continue the wonderful work in helping student successes that occur on this campus on a daily basis. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up, nine point three, Associated Students in Napa Valley College Report. This is Christopher Sotelo Hernandez, and he is not here, but he did have a report attached. Where, do I have it? I don't have it up here. Okay. All right. Board of Trustees, December meeting. Hello, members of the public and Board of Trustees. As always, the ASNVC organization continues to be very active and will jump right into the next semester with full energy. What will take first priority will be to approve the bylaws as soon as possible. Some projects and tasks that ASNVC will be attempting to complete in order to set a clear guide to success for the board and set some of the procedures for the board. One, ASNVC Business Plan. Two, ASNVC Events Plan. Three, the ASNVC Marketing Plan. Four, ASNVC Philosophy. Five, ASNVC Evaluations Template. And six, the ASNVC Student ID Card Initiative. Since this is the last Board of Trustees meeting of the semester, I wanted to give a shout out to all the faculty, administration, and staff that has assisted ASNVC this semester in any way possible. And a shout out to all the ASNVC board members that ensured the success and stability of the ASNVC. Student trustee Pablo Leon, Vice President Celeste Romero Medina, Secretary Victoria Alida, Treasurer Erica Hernandez, and Events Coordinator Aurora Guilen, Senator One Michael Granados, Senator Two London Legree, Senator Three Rosanna Gomez, Senator Four Musa Rashid, Senator Five Francesca Mejá. Thank you. Associated Students in Napa Valley College President Christopher Hernandez Sotelo. Thank you, Christopher, for that report, if you're out there listening. Next is Classified Association Report, Ms. Valerie Mull, which I do not see this evening. I do not have a report for her. Nine point five, Classified Senate Report, Mr. Marty Shoemaker.
Yeah, Valerie's across the way. She's having her Christmas party. Not sweating, you know, and apologize, you know, for her. And I told her, you know, I apologize for her too, you know, and I told her we'll be okay. And I just want to thank you guys because, yeah, you guys make these meetings a lot easier to deal with. And, yeah, and now that I've had some time with you guys, it's really been a pleasure to be able to hang out with you guys and come and see the way you work. And if there's any way we can help District One, Six, and Seven get re-elected, you know, let me know. I'll say something, okay? And I want to wish you guys a happy holidays, okay? Yes, next year's going to even be better.
Yes, definitely.
Marty, it's been a pleasure to have you in here, and the board and the district at large appreciate the classified and everything you've been doing, so thank you. Nine point six, Faculty Association Report, Kristy Yamamoto.
Hello, everyone. This will be my last report of 2019. Just letting you know that we had a very successful Napa Valley College Distress Day yesterday. We had four therapy dogs here in the bookstore to cuddle on the floor with the kids and, or the students, sorry. The students, and we had some younger kids come too. Some of the students brought their younger brothers and sisters and brought their children to come and visit. The bookstore really went all out. They had a popcorn machine. They had Pepsi come in to give free sparkling waters and Gatorades to the students. Our Health Center Coordinator Nancy Tamarisk brought a masseuse who was giving a five to 10-minute neck and shoulder massages, as well as had stress-relieving toys like Play-Doh and things like that, and Stress Falls to give out to the students. So it was just a really fun event. I think it was better attended than I've ever seen, and it's always been well-attended, so that was really fun. I wanted to extend my thanks to our outgoing treasurer, Merrick McKee, who is, and congratulate him for he will be going on paternity leave in the spring. So for that time, I also wanted to thank Terry Wagner, who will be stepping in on an interim basis. Merrick did such a good job in his tenure as treasurer. We've since stopped using the abacus and beans, and we actually have QuickBooks and are using things that people use in this century, so it's pretty amazing. So he's leaving us better than when he started, and that's the most important thing, that we, you know, were in a good place there. And did want to mention that in the spring, the Faculty Association will be working on our bylaws and making some changes there. We are looking forward to opening up the contract with our district counterparts and getting in there together and having a speedy and peaceful negotiations, which are always ongoing, to settle everything in the contract. And I hope everybody has a great holiday season, and I'll see you here same time in January.
Begging the President's indulgence, I left off something in my report. Can I go ahead and add it now?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I wanted to let the board know that the Senate in Business Session has approved sabbaticals. We approved two. Dr. Iris Dunkle will be taking a year sabbatical. We're recommending her sabbatical be approved. And then Dr. Erin DeFranco will also, will be taking a semester sabbatical. And those were approved by the Academic Senate, and I too wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine point seven, Dr. Kraft.
Just an announcement. I just want to shout out to the Administrative Senate and Bob Harris for hosting the holiday gathering for administrators and confidential. It's very nice. At least until I left. I don't know what happened after that. But it's always a really nice event, and it's good to see the camaraderie and esprit de corps, really, that we have as an administrative unit. So it was really, really, thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. Happy holidays to everybody. We won't see each other, and it's kind of a good thing over the holidays to not see people, you know, rest, you know, catch up, do our thing, you know? So that's all I have. There'll be a lot more coming in next semester. I would say that we have a lot of initiatives coming in the spring, so hold on. A lot of great work. Looking forward to it next year. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next up, this is item 10. This is Consent Calendar. Do I have any requests to poll, anything? Have a motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
I have a motion by trustee Dodd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Baldini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Consent calendar pass. Next up, item 11. This is Academic Affairs Information Discussion Action Items. Eleven point one, this is Curriculum Changes. This is an action item.
So move.
Second.
It is both, it is two curriculum packets tonight. I don't, did everyone catch that?
Yep.
Do I still have the motion by trustee Baldini?
Still stands.
Second? Second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Eleven point two, Academic Calendar. This is an action item as well. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Rios. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Baldini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimous. Next up, item 12, Administrative Services Information Discussion and Action. And... Here, nothing here. Following along. Administrative Services, approve, this is 12.1, approve amendment to pre-development agreement with the Martin Group to extend completion date of the preliminary design feasibility.
I'd like to speak on that.
Hey, Gary, I'm going to get through this first before I have you come up, okay?
Oh, good. On this item? Yes, on this item. I have the wrong number on there.
So you're wishing to speak on?
The?
12.1, not 12.2.
What?
Okay.
On the Martin Group, yeah.
Move for approval.
I have a motion by trustee Baldini.
Are we on 12.1?
We're on 12.1. This is the amendment to pre-development agreement with the Martin Group.
Just to remind the board, I recused myself in the last decision based on the conflict of interest, business interest, so I'm going to do that for this vote as well.
Thank you. Okay. This is an action item. This is 12.1. I do have a motion on the floor from trustee Baldini.
Second.
I have a second by trustee Rios. All those in favor?
I'd like to speak on this item, please.
No, I have a motion. I'm going to call the question and go through. I have two motions. First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Goff? All right. It is an action item. I...
Well, I'd like to speak before you take action.
Okay. We can. Go ahead, Gary.
Let me clarify. So I'll do the secretarial thing here. You've had a first and a second and a vote. If you want to unwind that vote, you could do that. But right now, I think you passed this piece regardless of...
Excuse me. I asked to speak.
No, no, no. I'm just clarifying where we are, Gary. So if they want to, if you want to unwind it, you could do that. I'm just, for the record here, saying what you want to do. It doesn't preclude you speaking or anything else. I'm just clarifying.
I didn't vote. I know that trustee Goff did not, so we have at least two recusals if you're going to record that.
So do we want to unwind it and go back and have public comment first before?
Do we need a motion? I'll move to unwind our vote.
Okay. So I have a motion to unwind by trustee Rios and a second by trustee Baldini. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. All right.
Thank you very much.
We have to vote on that first.
All those in favor to rewind?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have everybody there?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous on that. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Honorable Trustees. I really think you need some discussion. I'd like to express my concern with the process the college is taking to develop campus housing. I previously have addressed you about the utter lack of competitive negotiations to hire a project manager. I renew that objection and request you terminate the contract agreement and seek more than one proposal. If you determine to continue, I request you modify the process to employ independent expert advisors. I recently asked for information at a recent community forum on campus housing about the continued retention of the Scion Group to evaluate proposals, or the proposal, from the Martin Group. The answers were vague and non-committal, so my question is, has the Scion Group been retained to evaluate any proposals coming from the Martin Group? And since you're probably not going to answer that, I think it's in your oversight duty to request staff to have the Scion Group review and evaluate any proposals made by the Martin Group. And I'd like to go through with you, if I might, the history of this issue of retaining independent advice. On August the 10th, 2017, at this board meeting, this is after several board meetings at which the same issue was raised. Staff reported on the RFQ selection process. The board discussed the need for independent advice for oversight of housing planning and development. The crux of the discussion came when Vice President Parker gave some advice on the subject, and Board Chairman Cuso summed up about 20 minutes of discussion. And what Mr. Parker said was, "I'm sorry, I was just going to say that as we review, as we have the interviews and as we review the proposals, seeing how that integration takes place, I would agree that someone, you know, there needs to be someone, one individual agency who is representative of the college district to that, in that activity." And trustee Martenson said, "That's my point." That we needed somebody that works, a person that's planning, that's doing the needs assessment and so forth, that needs to work for us, not for the developer. Trustee Man Cuso then said, "I think that sounds like, I think it sounds like that what everybody's saying, the board. It sounds like the board is asking that we look for somebody who can play an independent role. I think that wraps it up. I don't think we need to rehash that same conversation." Then on September 14th, the year board meeting in 2017, Balfour Beatty was introduced, and trustee Baker asked a question of the representative as to the nature of the process and whether the district needed their own representation. And the Balfour Beatty representative said, "I actually used that to play that role," and then actually chuckled. It's like, yes, of course you need one. He went on, "I can share a lot about that. They certainly do play a great role in that process in terms of sometimes the best role as staff augmentation." And then fast forward to April of 2019, at the board meeting, trustee Baker asked, in, in the, in the context of indirect expenses to the district, asked Anne Volz, the Cyon representative, "You kind of touched on it already about the issue of security and needing 24-hour campus, and 24-hour campus. I'm curious, when you talk about financial feasibility, is that included? Because we don't want to make, make money necessarily, but we don't want to create a money pit. So how does that get worked into the financial feasibility?" And she explained that, "Well, we look at the bottom line and whether there's cash flow." And that quite didn't answer the question, so trustee Dodd asked, "When we're talking about trustee Goff's question and trustee Baker's question in terms of these ancillary costs, is that really the question for you? The Cyon Group would really be addressing that, or is that for the developer?" And she went on to say, and answered to that question, "There's a, that's a, that's a little bit challenging to quantify exactly, but we can certainly, because we do with our other clients, too, especially first-time housing, is, is give you a pretty high-level estimate. Your developer, and they're all really good people, they're not going to be quite as concerned because that's on the college, what you have to pay. So that doesn't affect, quite frankly, that doesn't affect their world. Meaning, they're not gonna watch out for the developer. So you need independent counsel. You need independent advice. And if you go and take a look at the pre-development agreement of the Santa Rosa JC when they did their housing, their staff report, when they presented the proposal, and you haven't ever received a proposal yet, but when they received their proposal in the pre-development agreement, the staff report said this. The attached pre-development agreement and exhibits have been created through lengthy and careful conversation between SRJC and Servitas with advice from Cyon experts who also represent SRJC. Made it very clear that Cyon was representing the college. So, and if you look at the, if you look at the pre-development agreement of Santa Rosa JC in section 1.1C, they talk about other consultants and sub-consultants. And it says, "The developer shall meet and confer and coordinate as reasonably requested by the district with consultants employed by the district as set forth in Exhibit C." And who do they set forth in Exhibit C of their contract? They said Cyon, legal counsel various, and they had a secret consultant. And then it also said, "And the district has the ability to consult with their consultants, and their, their consultants are listed." Now, if you take a look at your pre-development agreement, it's very similar language, but it's blank as to whom the developer must consult with. No consultants representing the district are listed. It's like, it's blank. It's like, and it says, "They only have to consult with their own consultants." That's what your, your contract says. It's almost like, you know, there was never going to be any independent consultants for the district representing you with the developer to, to evaluate their proposal. So I request you have a conversation right now and direct your staff not to present you with a proposal in blank that's never been evaluated by one of your excellent experts you paid $40,000 for, has intimate knowledge of what the needs of this college are and the ability to push back of a developer that doesn't know as much as they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Just acknowledge that it has been in the past, general practice, that we have a motion and a second and then discuss. It is a board meeting. Thank you for your comments, Gary. Uh, Dr. Kraft, do you have anything to?
I can quickly. Thanks, Gary, for the, for your comments. The, just for the record, it may, it, I, I try to follow. It's a little circuitous, but I could say that staff is communicating with Cyon as we've relayed on several, several occasions. They, they, as I've relayed previously, they, they are retained continuously as a consultant. We've directed the Martin Group to, to connect with the Cyon Group to review numbers. So we're in agreement, you know. They work directly for us, not, not for the Martin Group.
Okay, board, with that.
Before voting, once again, I just want to make it clear that recusing myself, and I did also want to add that, you know, the Martin Group, why I'm recusing myself, which I mentioned at the last board meeting, is the Martin Group is a client of my law firm. Um, I don't do any work with the Martin Group. I'm also not a partner or owner of the law firm. I'm an associate. So note, I don't have a business interest, but out of, over abundance of caution, I am recusing myself. Thank you.
And, uh...
Can I ask a couple, just two quick questions? First, I just want to clarify what you were saying, that we are continuing to work with Cyon. Are, are they under contract, or are they just doing that as a courtesy?
No, we, we, we are, uh, my agreement, when I talked to Anne Volz, their representative, we continued to have them as a consultant on an hourly, and so she agreed to that. We have had several conversations over the, I don't know, some, you know, past months or so, including this one that we've directed the Martin Group to reach out to them to check their numbers, and they're, they'll get back to us. So they are our, our consultant, you know, and we're, we're picking up that tab.
And my second question was just clarifying that what we're voting on, it doesn't change anything other than the due date, correct?
No. It's just, it's just delaying it, because it was tonight, so we're pushing it out 30 days because there's holidays and gathering these numbers.
I'm gonna look for a motion for 12.1. This is to approve the amendment to pre-development agreement with the Martin Group to extend completion date of the preliminary design and feasibility phase to January 25th, 2020.
My, my original still stands. We just unraveled the first...
Is that the unwound or the original?
Yeah, we just unwound, so the base still, is still there. Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion, my trustee Baldini. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by trustee Rios. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
With a, with a recusal.
With, with the recusal that has been noted that trustee Jeff Dodd has recused himself. Thank you. 12.2, update on Mount Veder properties. Dr. Kraft?
Um, yeah. Matt's in tonight, too. If, as you know, we've been reporting over, on Mount Veder for, you know, several years. We were on a pathway, and then the fires in 17 did some damage, and Matt's here tonight to kind of bring us up to speed on, on those properties.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit. I think everybody's familiar with the properties that we're talking about. The college has a couple of pieces of property up off of Mount Veder that have dated back, the Bumpy Camp area is approximately 160 acres that was through the land, Nature Conservancy was given to the college in 1974 to hold in trust for educational purposes. And then in 1979, the college was, I, I keep using the word given. It's, sometimes it's, you question whether it's really a gift or not, but, because there's work associated with it. But an additional 40 acres in 1979 from the Napa Land Trust, and that's the Dale Peters Clyde Preserve. Not sure how well this comes out on this particular slide, but you can see that yellow tack on the left is the Clyde Preserve, the 40 acres, and then Bumpy Camp is the area to the right. And there's, again, there's a tack that's in the approximate middle location of that. Again, part of the, part of the rationale by giving it to the college would be to help protect the lands for the, the citizens of Napa County. On the picture on the left-hand side where they are on Clyde Preserve is, you can see the green line that zigzags its way up the page. That's the county line between Sonoma County and Napa County. So you can see that it's very, very close to Sonoma County on that edge. Additionally, you can see where all the vineyard spaces are that, that are going into those areas. And the, the Clyde Preserve from that tack, you can see where Dry Creek Road is the yellow line just above that. And it's basically just a 40-acre swath that goes up between those vineyards. And when I started at the college, those vineyards in that area were not there. So again, it kind of speaks to, you know, I, I think what the goal was of, the land trust was, is to have that, that property sort of set aside, again, for the college's use from, from an educational point of view and an aesthetic perspective.
Excuse me. We're saying this, the property was gifted by the land trust? Is that, is that accurate?
Land trust gave the college the land for the Clyde Preserve.
Okay.
And the Bumpy Camp was from Nature Conservancy, which was a different entity, and I don't know that...
I'm never aware of hearing of the land trust or the Nature Conservancy giving up land before. I just, uh...
So they basically give, they give that to the college to basically monitor and protect. Part of the thing is, so, yes, we can, at a future time, or I can share the agreement so that, so that the board can see those as well. In 2017, as you all know, in October, there were at least one of the, the many fires that we've had recently, and both of those properties were affected by the fire. So this, this is actually from Dale Peters Clyde Preserve, and, and obviously not all these pictures. It's, anybody that's been in the forest, you try to take a picture of the forest, you really don't get much perspective because you're in the forest. So that, there you go. So the, there's a lot of the areas on Bumpy Camp where we've had historic trails that have dated back into the 70s and certainly through that period, but there, it has been overgrowth that's happened in that area. The trails have not been maintained. And additionally, then we had some fire damage as well. So these are some pictures that, you can see on the right, there's an example of one of the existing trails that not only is overgrown, same with on the left, but there's also fire damage as well. In working with state and county groups, there was funding that was available. Ultimately, it came from the federal government down through the Employment Development Department at the state level, once an emergency was declared through FEMA. So they're able with this grant money then to turn around and try to help displaced workers and people that have been affected by the fire. It took some time to get to that point. There's a picture from Dale Peters Clyde. Again, you can see all those trees in that picture have some level of fire damage. So it, it took us a little bit of time working with those agencies to come in and start the process of doing some cleanup. But this was an opportunity where we could clean up some of the fire damage, open up some of the trails, and basically be able to employ some people that were displaced from the fire activity. So in February 2019 is the place where we actually had workers trained, because one of the processes of this is to hopefully be able to train workers that could then go find other employment down the road. So again, these pictures try to represent a little bit, we've had as many as nine people on the crew up there, working Monday through Friday. The number fluctuates between, like, between two and nine. You can see that they've done a tremendous amount of cutting. They're stacking the wood. Any of the smaller stuff, they're chipping and just spreading it across, in some cases where they've done some hand repair on the trails. Then they're using the wood chips to try to, try to fill in and, and create some pretty good cover there as well. There are just, i- i- it's, it's really staggering to see it now. Hopefully, it's still as clean. I see you have a board meeting scheduled in July, so when you're up there, hopefully we, you can still see some of the effects. So they're doing a combination of chainsaw work, chipping. They're also using string trimmers and picks and shovels and things to go in and, and try to clean out the underbrush and reestablish many of the existing trails. This is a really an old trail map, but it's actually very effective, that shows the Bumpy Camp area. So the blue-lined trails have been cleaned, cleared, and chipped. They're, they're wide open now at this point. You can see that, both on the left-hand side and the right-hand side of the picture, there's, there's a couple of sections of trails that are more of, let's call that magenta, just for being creative. The magenta area, they've gone through with the chainsaw, and they've basically opened up the trail so you can pass through it with a small truck. But they haven't done all the chipping and, and any of the string trimming. The, the maroon lines, both in the circle and then in the three lines that head up towards the top of the page, those are, are areas left to do. And again, that's, they basically go in straight lines and then join, join the property that's adjacent to the Bumpy Camp area. Again, they've done a tremendous amount of work. There's still more work to do that we're hoping that, that the funding will be extended. So again, basically, this, this program or this project is managed by the California Human Development using, they're working under the Employment Development Department. The, the funding is from the state of California, using funding from FEMA grants. In total, so far, between, again, between February and December 1st of this year, you can see nearly 7,000 hours of labor. They are, the starting wage for these folks is $16.90, so it's a, it's a respectable wage for them. They're being trained on how to use chainsaws, string trimmers, and other things. One of the challenges that we've actually had is several of them are now working for tree companies in the area. So then we're in that process of now we need to backfill with new people. Again, over $100,000 in salaries to date, plus an additional $10,000 for training and equipment for the participants. There's been a little bit of cost for the college. We send people up to monitor them. We're providing them with string for their weed ears and gas for the chainsaws and those kinds of things, and helping now with the rental for the, the chipper equipment. But again, if we were to, as the college have gone out and tried to hire tree services to do this kind of work, it would have been hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, ultimately from, from the college's pocket at that point. We received word in November, early November, that the funding was going to be extended and that the program would be extended through June of 2020. They sent me an email today that said, "Not so fast. The funds are there, but they haven't given us a new contract yet." So it's part of the trickle-down of federal grants that... So the goal would be is if we do have the extended funding, we'll go ahead and extend this process and continue on those trails. So...
How, approximately how many workers do, are there working on this project?
Three weeks ago, we had nine that were up there at that time. I think right now we're down around four or five. It, it does tend to fluctuate, certainly weather conditions or something. A lot of them ride share together to get up there. So if, if somebody is out sick, one thing I will say that they have, in, in part of getting some of this information from our contacts with California Human Development, there have been five workers' comp claims, and they've all been poison oak. So that's one of the ongoing things is, is that there's a lot of poison oak up there. Unfortunately, three of them have been the same person. So it's like, guys, this is what it looks like. Stay away from that stuff. So, so anyway, that's, there, there's a little bit of attendance issues that you can imagine that would be associated with that. But overall, it's been a, a very good experience.
I had a question. You were, I noticed in the pictures, I mean, it looks beautiful. The trails are all clean. But you, you chip some of it, but then there are, there are cut logs stacked. Or do they stay there and stack them, or is there a way to get them down to people who might use them in wood burning stoves, or, I mean, or do they just stay up there?
At, at this point, we're choosing to leave them there. We need to reevaluate some of the language. And again, some of the language that's in the original covenants and, and things are archaic. We need to go back and, and evaluate that, because traditionally, what we've done is, is that if a tree has fallen across the, the trail, we cut it up and just toss it off to the side and leave it. Because of the magnitude of what we were cutting and trimming and, and the stuff that was damaged by the fire, we're actually stacking it so it looks nice and pretty.
Yeah.
Some of that wood is dami, i- i- is fire damaged and probably wouldn't be effective. They did chip a lot of the wood that was burned that would fit through the chipper. So again, at this point, we're choosing just to kind of leave it there. We haven't really thought about, you know, whether we...
What to do, or?
Part, part of it is, is it's challenging to get up in those areas. We've taken up... We've taken up, we can get up through there pretty easily with a pickup when it's dry. But again, it's, we're, it's a lot of firewood.
Yeah, yeah, that is a lot of firewood. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Moving right along. Next is item twelve point three. This is our update on campus technology. This is gonna be Bob Parker and Eric Houck. Did I say that right?
Houck.
Houck?
I've, I've heard it all before, so it doesn't really matter. Hi, everybody. My name is Eric Houck. I am the Senior Director of Institutional Technology here at Napa Valley College. And I've been asked to present to you some information about our campus technology specifically related to our infrastructure. So in terms of what I want to talk about a little bit today, first of all, defining what are we talking about when we talk about IT infrastructure? A little bit of a brief history of some of the infrastructure-related projects we've accomplished over the last eight to ten years here related to infrastructure. Looking at the Planet Infrastructure Assessment, which was conducted recently, and a breakdown of their Phase One recommendations that came out of that assessment, and then talking a little bit about next steps before opening up to questions that any of you might have. So first of all, what is IT infrastructure? There's many things related to technology that I could talk about, but going to focus very specifically tonight around talking about infrastructure. We use that term, we're talking primarily about the entire collection of hardware, networks primarily, and data centers, including some of our facilities and the various pieces that we use to operate, manage all of those components. It's, it's really the central nervous system of all things that we do related to technology. It is, is very foundational, even though you don't see it, you feel it and experience its effects. So it involves various components, including physical hardware, including storage resources, including the various routers and network switches that we utilize, the building itself, the facilities, the wiring in the walls and in the floors and in the ceilings that you can't see, and just the overall design and structure of the networks. So in terms of infrastructure projects that we've been doing for some time, not to list, this is not a comprehensive list, but some of the, the high-level projects that we've done, first of all, I wanted to identify when our, our core switch, which is that very fundamental central component that powers everything around our network, it is the center, the nexus, the grand central station of our network, was last replaced about in two thousand ten. In two thousand thirteen, we made the conversion from a traditional landline phone system, copper-based wiring, to a VoIP, which stands for Voice Over Internet Protocol. So basically, running our phone system on the network, which is pretty common, most corporations and organizations do today, but we did that about two thousand thirteen. In two thousand fourteen was our first major initial rollout of Wi-Fi across the campuses. And in two thousand fifteen, we upgraded our email Microsoft Exchange system on premises, as well as, that was the point at which we also refreshed our firewall, which is a protective device to secure our network and prevent erroneous traffic from getting in and out, which I'll talk more about a little bit later. And then in two thousand sixteen, we did a pretty significant upgrade to our colleague system, which is our, our primary system that we use to operate almost everything here at the college, from financial aid, student HR, finance, all runs on the colleague system. And we did a fairly significant upgrade to the services and functions there, including what we call load balancing, which is, if you've ever been in the checkout line at the supermarket and you hear the call from, you know, open register on aisle five because the line's too long, that's effectively what we did with our colleague system. So recognizing at times where we had peak loads of traffic and users on our system, it was, it was slowing things down and clogging things up. In a load balancing environment, it allows us to basically split that traffic into multiple directions and kind of reduce that response time. So that was a significant improvement that was conducted in two thousand sixteen. In two thousand seventeen, particularly direct result from the fires we experienced and the loss of our connection, our internet connection to the world, we purchased an alternative circuit. We have redundant circuits through SCENIC, which is a nonprofit organization that provides network services to public orientate, public institutions, including the entire K through twenty, the UC system, the Cal State CSU system as well. We lost both of those connections during the fires. And so this is really a tertiary connection that we purchased at that time so that hopefully we never reach that situation again, but we have it if we need to. In two thousand eighteen, we did a pretty significant purchase, which was replacing the UPS, which is, as I like to call them, our big boy batteries down in the, the floor below us to support our primary data rooms downstairs that house all of this equipment that runs everything that we do. And lastly, but certainly not least, we purchased some network monitoring software near the beginning of this year to help monitor some of the traffic and what was going on within our network. Because one of the things we have begun to notice is some level of degradation in, in the types of services and speeds we're having across our network. So we wanted to be able to monitor that actively. In conjunction with that, that was the point at which we also made the decision, or I should say, this board made the decision to engage the Planet Group to conduct an independent survey of our overall network. So in February, they were contracted to do that assessment, to look primarily, again, just at infrastructure, not some of the various other levels of technology we utilize here at Napa Valley College, but focus primarily on those infrastructure pieces, to look at those various key components and make some recommendations and priorities to what we might do to make some improvements there. So they were here onsite in March. They conducted onsite interviews during that time and were given a lot of supportive documentation of how things were designed and oriented here, met with IT staff and others. They drafted an initial assessment, which was reviewed for clarity and accuracy, making sure what they heard was accurate and true and that matched what we understood as well in April. And then the final report was delivered to us in May. So the deliverables that were put together as part of that assessment were kind of twofold. The first one that came out of that was really a, a roadmap for the immediate future and how we might implement some of these recommendations in various phases. So first phase, the first one to six months, second phase, seven to eighteen months, third phase, nineteen to thirty-six months, with things in a fourth phase that were either ongoing types of items to be addressed or no specific timeline set to them as that phase four ongoing. In addition to that, they put together recommendation or estimates around overall costs. So looking at some of those total costs of ownership and what that looks like, broken down both in capital one-time expenditures as well as ongoing operational expenditures. Their methodology for putting all this together, as I said, involved interviews, involved a physical tour of our facilities and looking at a lot of the key documents we use in terms of defining our network and infrastructure, as well as utilizing specific software to run analysis on some of our environments and configurations of some of those things. There was participation from key representatives, from classified staff, from faculty and administration that participated when they were onsite. And the overall areas of focus that their findings were really driven towards were cabling, which is both the, the backbone cabling, which is kind of everything that connects everything from the buildings to each other, as well as the existing buildings themselves, looking at our, our primary technology rooms, as well as our overall network, including security, wide area network, local area network, and the wireless systems, looking at servers and storage, including our virtual systems, our virtualization, as well in terms of IT operations and how we were doing in terms of monitoring and managing our network and our infrastructure, assessing our, our cloud footprint and our backup capacities and our overall disaster recovery capabilities. So out of that, the, the primary recommendations that I wanted to discuss or, or share or review were around those Phase One recommendations, which was the first one to six months. Out of that were twenty-eight specific recommendations that the Planet Group put together. Sixteen were categorized as high priority, eleven were categorized as medium priority, and one was in the low priority. And what we've done, I've, for orientation to what I've put up here, I don't intend to go through each one of these bullet by bullet, you're welcome. But I did want to give just a, a definition of this that I took directly from the overall Planet Report. It has at the end of it, the section of the report that these recommendations came out of, as well as the individual priority that each one of these was assigned by the Planet Group. So the first one, that is probably the, the most significant and most important finding, really had to do with the status of our network core, which, as I said, is that fundamental heart and foundation of everything that we do as it relates to our network. And one of the, the primary findings they found is that we're currently operating the entire district on a single one gigabyte pipe connection, meaning there's one gigabyte worth of bandwidth traffic that the entire college is operating under. We're not able to fully utilize our redundant connections or the tertiary connections that we're using actively because of some of the designs around our firewall and just the general age of the equipment. As I said, shared earlier, the, the core switch was last purchased or installed back in two thousand ten. So in their terms, it is, it is past end of life and needs to be replaced. One of the fundamental elements is that because this is such a foundational piece to our overall core network, this impacts everything else that is connected to it, as you might imagine. All of these systems are interrelated, so this issue impacts everything going out from the core, which is all of our buildings, all of our computers, all of our wireless connections as well. So this is the number one priority that we were able to identify from some of their recommendations that, that came out of their assessment. The second major component that they identified was really refreshing some of the building network equipment, which we, we generally term the edge switches, the, the similar types of components that exist separate from that core that are connected to it that exist in each one of the individual buildings. We have several that are, again, past or near end of life as it relates to those individual buildings and recommending that we replace those as well. So these first two categories or components that came out of these recommendations are the primary ones that have financial dollars tied to them in terms of for us to move forward on some of these items. The next ones that I want to share with you really are not financially oriented or, or heavy, I should say, but more of internally operational and how we manage things internally. So these don't really have dollar figures, but still important in the overall recommendations. The, the first one that I want to share with you is really the management of our Wi-Fi environment. So right now, we operate a, primarily a single public Wi-Fi connection that we make publicly available to everyone. One of the things, and you've probably experienced this, if you've ever had any experience with Wi-Fi at all, is connecting to private Wi-Fi environments where you're forced to log in, as well as seeing things that are publicly accessible and available. Being able to segment our Wi-Fi traffic in such a way that we can manage that more effectively and allow or control the flow of traffic as it relates to what we'd call private or internal Wi-Fi versus public and available to anyone and everyone Wi-Fi, as it, as it relates to allowing our students and staff and faculty, et cetera, to use the resources that are here more effectively. The other one that gets into the, the long list is the IT operational improvements. These are generally best practices that they identified. These, a lot of these came out of the running of their analysis software to kind of identify configurations, a lot of which have to do with our, our virtual machine servers and how we have some of those configured. But these are basically best practices that we can begin to employ better within our overall operations and management of things within IT. Again, not, not dollar figures, but things we can improve and do better. And then the last category is one that really gets into preserving and protecting and building for the future, some of the things that we'd like to do with our network. So it includes certain things like looking to SCENIC to expand our initial connection from a one gigabyte connection to a ten gigabyte connection. Now, one thing I didn't share earlier is that with the potential replacement of the core switch infrastructure, that would allow us already to effectively double the one gigabyte connection we have by using our, our redundant SCENIC circuits. Ten gigabytes is really, though, where we want to go at some point in the future. And so working with SCENIC to, to make that happen is the direction and recommendations they had as well. In addition to that, you know, general design best practices, utilizing things like our connection to American Canyon High School, which if you remember during the two thousand seventeen fires, American Canyon wasn't as impacted. So if we'd had a way to connect to them to get to the outside world, that may have been a way to allow us to continue to stay in operation if we'd had that type of design and architecture. So looking at some of those design pieces of our network is well also part of those recommendations and, and building out towards the future. With that, I'll share a little bit about some of the next steps we have been doing or have been working towards based on some of these recommendations. And the, and the first one is one that you'll see here very shortly, which is a financing proposal to fund the replacement of the core switch components. This also includes replacing our firewall, which is, as you might imagine, we run everything in terms of our traffic through our firewall for security purposes, but because of the age and architecture of, of it as well, that's a limitation in terms of allowing us to expand to utilizing more bandwidth and those secondary circuits. So it's included in this project as well. In terms of refreshing the building network equipment, we did recently refresh the network switches in the thirteen hundred building, not planned, but we, we had a, a power fluctuation that caused those switches to not perform any longer. So we implemented some emergency replacements. Thankfully, we had some alternative solutions in place that we were able to utilize without too negatively impacting the services in that building. I'm able to bring things mostly back up initially and then ultimately replace those very quickly. Also looking towards developing a, a more formalized refresh cycle for those network components in the individual buildings where they need to be replaced. In terms of Wi-Fi management, we have begun utilizing segmentations of our Wi-Fi network, particularly started to define these for usage within some of our classrooms as we're using laptop carts in specific locations, so that those laptops in those areas, as they're being used for instruction, don't get bogged down in the same way that the public Wi-Fi could be at any given time. Also looking to clean up our active directory environment, which is basically where we manage and, and kind of control all of our user accounts, including our students, looking at cleaning that up so that we can more effectively use those accounts to allow for individuals to log into potentially a, a more secure Wi-Fi environment. But that's more foundational to being able to allow us to do that. So beginning to explore that for a variety of reasons that, and benefits beyond this, but that's one of the components that we're looking at. Additionally, in terms of IT operational improvements, we did recently expand our, our virtual machine infrastructure, primarily to help support some of the website redevelopment that's going on and hosting that. Our long-term plans have to do with merging and centralizing all of that VM infrastructure under a single design, at which point, that's where we really want to utilize those recommendations, best practices, kind of get all those ducks in a row, as it were, to align those things under one plan, I'll say. And then lastly, but, but certainly not least, looking at future proof, we have begun conversations with the chancellor's office and SCENIC, looking towards expanding to utilizing a ten gigabyte circuit. One of the common challenges when, when talking with SCENIC in that context is we say, well, we're, we think we're. we think we're ready for a ten-gigabyte connection." They say, "Well, are you ready for it? Do you have what you need?" And we say, "Well, not quite yet." So, it's a bit of a chicken-and-egg conversation, but again, an active dialogue that we've broached with them as well. And lastly, we are also in the process of migrating our Lucian System colleague into the cloud, which was part of the overall for Phase Two recommendations that came out of the Planet. But again, evaluating our cloud operations, that is a significant component of all the operations we do relating to our servers and systems, that moving to the cloud hosting will be a big benefit and dividend. So, with that, I'll pause and open it up to questions you may have.
Questions?
I had a quick question about the SCENIC. You mentioned having some connection at American Canyon High School. Has there been any discussion about disconnecting all of VUSD to the backbone?
Yes, some of that has to do with having the necessary equipment down at American Canyon High School as well. We have some pieces there, but not everything we'd need to be able to allow us to do something like that, but it's something we're exploring.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you for presenting this very well laid-out presentation. This fully covered exactly what I was looking for in terms of Wi-Fi. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Do you stay up here for this next one? Twelve-point-four.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, how, that would be my question, but it parlay's into the next item, which is an action item. This is twelve-point-four. How much of this is going to impact the presentation we just had?
So, I'll start. So, this is that the primary elements of Phase One are what Eric referred to, the upgrade of the firewall and the core for our data center, and this proposal covers both of those things. And so, the investment, if we were to purchase the equipment today outright, would be over five-hundred thousand dollars, which is certainly not something that we currently have in the budget. But more importantly, as we look at our IT needs in particular, we're evaluating whether it makes sense to make the purchases. So, for example, one of the first things on Eric's list of upgrades that took place was the purchase of that core infrastructure in 2010. As Eric points out, it is woefully out of date at this point. And so, does it make sense to purchase equipment that five years from now will need to be replaced so that you're constantly looking to set aside, in this case, five-hundred thousand dollars every five years? Or does it make sense to lease that equipment? It brings down the initial cost, it makes it easier to budget for because it's a fixed cost on an annual basis. And in this particular case, it allows us to embark on Phase One of this project, improve the pipeline into the campus, get us ready for a ten-gigabyte connection so that the next time we ask SCENIC where we are on the list, we can say, "We're ready. We can take it right now." But even without that ten-gigabyte, the ability for us to bring in that second pipe and, in effect, double, I hope I'm not misstating that, double our connection to the outside world is significant. And so, that's what, so Eric and I had conversations after we reviewed the Planet proposal to say, "Is there a way that we can look at leasing or financing this equipment so that we can get moving on that?" And that's the proposal that you see tonight in twelve-point-four.
And is it typically leased? I mean, is it because of the cost of it and how long it lasts and...
More and more companies, and it's more prevalent on the industry side, not something that you see as frequently on the higher education side, but in our conversations with the company and looking at our past practices, in the past, we and other community colleges and colleges in general, public colleges in general, have looked to one-time funding from the state, which is very limited these days and doesn't look like it's going to increase at any time soon. Looking to other one-time sources of funding like general obligation bonds and purchasing equipment that is out of date in five years is probably not the best way to utilize general obligation bond funds. And so, more and more of us, and in fact, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but this company was one of the recommendations that came from other schools who are doing similar things. And so, we really are looking more and more toward leasing equipment that is, becomes obsolete in a short period of time.
Makes sense. Last question, I promise. And you may have covered it, and I apologize if I glazed over because that was a lot of information.
Yes, it was.
Especially for a non-IT person, but our current server room, how does that factor into the plans that we were just looking at?
If I recall correctly, they have some recommendations for the server room, not in Phase One, but looking at things like combining some of those spaces. One of the things that's happening in industry-wide, as I referenced, using virtual infrastructures for those things. So, where we used to have, say, twenty different boxes, all servers physically, those are now being combined down into one large machine that it serves as that virtual machine that replicates those twenty servers. So, from a physical standpoint, that footprint is shrinking. And so, one of the recommendations they had was combining that we primarily have two main spaces downstairs that host all that equipment, but moving that into one single location. Also, looking at having, I can't remember if this is in Phase Two or Phase Three, but looking at having a secondary space where some of those things could exist in case there was some natural disaster or something else that took out the space downstairs so that we can continue to operate. But those are more long-term types of planning and structures. So, they did have some recommendations around the physical space downstairs, but not in the Phase One components as they saw it.
Okay, I fibbed. I have one more. So, who controls our data? Do we still have control of our data?
Absolutely.
Or does Planet have it or SCENIC?
In terms of our data, though, Planet was just an independent organization to come in and look and do an assessment. As it relates to cloud implementations and our data existing in cloud environments external to here, one of the very important things to review in any of those types of cloud contracts is ownership of the data and maintaining and managing that. So, every cloud contract we enter into, we're looking at very specifically where that data goes, but thus far, everything, as we've been doing it, and we haven't done a lot cloud-related yet, the colleague migration is a big part of that, but that data still is ours and owned by us.
Perfect. All right.
I would like to make a motion to move to approve the agreement.
Second. Five, all right. I have a motion and a second. Trustee Pablo made the motion, trustee Baldini made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. All right. Item thirteen, human resources, information discussion and action. This is item thirteen-point-one. This is the Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Initial proposal, information only. Who's, do we have any questions, comments, presentation?
We can open it up if you'd like to take a look.
Everybody good to move on or have we looked at it?
Do you have questions or no? Motion to?
It's information.
It's information.
Do we have any questions?
I guess not.
Christie, do you want to add anything or are you good? All right, we're moving on.
Exactly.
Thirteen-point-two. Napa Valley College District, initial proposal for negotiations with the Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA. This is for the contract period beginning July first, 2020. This is information. Again, do we open, close questions? Nothing? All right. Thank you. Item fourteen, student affairs, information discussion and action. We do have an action item. This is fourteen-point-one. Approval of the agreement with Hobson's for Starfish Enterprise Success Platform. Oscar, I think this is coming from you.
Yes, it's correct. Thank you. Yeah, let me provide you a bit of back history. Thank you. Let me provide a bit of the history of this tool, this product, and the efforts of the college to engage in it and to purchase it. Things started back about 2009, when we realized that there was the necessity for having a tool that was on the market to assist the college with finding out those individuals, those students who may be having some sort of difficulty within classes. What this tool does, it's an alert. Basically, what it does, it's connected basically from faculty to our counseling staff and to the services to notify counselors and services of any student who's having difficulty. The idea is that this is a retention tool, this is a tool that's used for success, you know, in success. But more importantly, it's a tool that really engages our faculty because they are the ones that will be the key users of this product. Throughout the last years, the 2009, when we tried to get this product in place, it was during the time that the categorical programs received major cuts in their funding. And so, we were unable to really, to really pursue it with honesty because the funding was not available. In recent years, as a result of SSSP funding and the like, and also through the direction of Senior Dean Howard, we have been able to finally cobble the monies together to purchase this tool that we believe is going to be a valuable asset to the college and also to our students. So, Howard, if there's any questions you have, Howard can answer some of those questions as well. But again, this is something that we've been looking forward to for many, many years, ten years. We have finally reached a point where the funding is available, where the product has been searched and sought and agreed to. It's a three-year contract, in essence, with payments of an average of forty-six thousand dollars per year, and the funding is available through our SSSP funds as well as other non-district monies. So, it's a product that we believe is needed. It's needed for some success and for retention purposes.
I have a motion on the floor by trustee Baldini. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Question. I just have a question about the funding. You said this is a three-year contract. What happens after that, as far as the funding goes?
D. Howard?
Thank you, Board. Howard Willis, Senior Dean, Counseling Services and Student Success. The funding is from the Student Equity and Achievement Funding Line. In the past, a budget that the Board of Trustees approved in our first year, it's actually being leveraged with some Guided Pathways funding, as well as funding directly from the Student Equity and Achievement Program via the Triple SP funding portion of it. That particular funding, as we speak so far, is funding through the future. The chancellor's office hasn't said that they're not funding Student Equity and Achievement. It is one of the guiding areas, along with Guided Pathway, with, for our current chancellor, is the vision. We also have leverage support from support programs that are willing, other categorical funds that are willing to support the initiative. It is the initiative that has been approved through the chancellor's office. There is up to fifty California community colleges that are using it. So, it is, we have thoroughly vetted it. And so, for a funding perspective, we're prepared to leverage from and request funding from other areas as well if the Student Equity and Achievement Fund goes away. We're not obligated after the three years, however.
Yeah, and that's not my concern was more, well, this sounds like a really good thing. What happens if we can't do it? We don't have the funding in three years? Is there, you know, kind of infrastructure and all these things that need to change to do this, and then all of a sudden, we don't have money? It sounds like there may be still some other funds that could be directed towards this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would say, you know, we'll gather metrics along the way, take a look and see and analyze it, and if funding runs out or dries up from the state, then it becomes a decision through unit plans, whether the district within step in to start to fund that as an initiative, and then it becomes a priority or not.
Well, that's what I was gonna, exact type of question. I saw the costs were spread out equally over three years, but it seems like once you have the program implemented, but I don't know exactly the mechanics and the details of how it works, but that's exactly, perhaps it's not as much of a cost, you know, post year three.
Well, I think on a program like this, from a board perspective, I think these are good questions. You know, when you initiate something like this, you want to ensure that it's not in perpetuity kind of coming back, and you're only doing it a couple of years. So, I guess our fallback for you is that we'll analyze it, look at it, it will work its way through. If it's worthy, if I can use that, Howard, if it proves to be as valuable as we think it is, I'm sure there will probably be funds coming from the state, the other kind of soft monies that come in to your side and also the district.
Federal grants that are available throughout the years, so those funds can be applied for and can also be used in partial use or payment for this tool.
Wonderful.
And a motion on the floor by trustee Baldini and a second by trustee Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Good job, you guys. Thank you, Oscar.
Chairman, just, Mr. Chair, just one comment since it's under student affairs. You have on your table there, you have a document, that's a document that I've been accustomed to share with you every year. The problem is that I have usually shared this in the month of October, and so, it's a couple of months late, so I apologize for that. Basically, what this is, this is the annual report that's put together by my office that addresses or that assesses the nineteen or so services within student affairs. And then there, we ask you five questions. You basically, one is, you know, one or two of your greatest achievements for the year, for the previous year, in this case, eighteen, nineteen year. And then also, what are one or two of the areas or activities that did not follow through or did not take place and why? And then also, what innovations you have for the forthcoming year? And then there's a piece there that provides you or provides us with data in terms of students served. So, again, take your time with this document, bless you. What this does, it also allows those of you who are not as familiar with student services as others may be, to give you a better sense or better feeling in terms of what goes on within the services provided by student affairs. So, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Nothing for item fifteen. Sixteen, Board Policy Review and Adoption. This is sixteen-point-one. Second reading. For repeal board policies, H. twenty-two sixty, H. twenty-three eleven, H. twenty-four oh five, H. twenty-four ten, H. twenty-four eleven, H. forty-five seventy. And this is an action item. And this is an action item.
Motion to repeal policies as listed in 16.1?
Well, second?
I have a motion by trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Passes unanimous, Catherine. Next, again, action items, 16.2. Second reading of board policy. This is BP 3910.
You saw this last month as a first read?
I'll make a motion to approve. I think we talked about it last week or last month unless somebody has a revision.
I, you know, I've been going motion and second on a few of these, but we've discussed before on a couple and haven't. So I'm gonna look for a motion. I have a motion by trustee Rios and a second by trustee Goff.
Yeah, just to remind everybody that we did look at this last time and we're waiting for the APs that are going to implement our policy.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Trustee Rios made the motion and trustee Goff seconded. All right. Board reports. Standing Committee and Other Appointment Reports. All right. District Auxiliary Service Foundation Board of Directors, that's me. We have a meeting scheduled for December 17th, and that will be changing with trustee Baker. BWT?
We met on December 3rd. Winery is looking more like a business, so that's wonderful. The vineyard is being replanted on some acreage, so that, but overall, everything is well. We're selling mulk wine, we're selling grapes, and so we're doing good.
Legislative Affairs Committee?
On hiatus till next month at least.
And Audit and Finance Committee?
We had planned to meet last month, or sorry, last week to review proposals for the new auditor, but we're having to reschedule that until after the New Year, so something soon.
Real Property Committee?
We have not met.
McPherson Distinguish, nothing. All right. Item 17.2, Future Agenda Item Request. Have discussed this, we've cleaned this up. Probably want to wait until the first of the year, but.
I just had a couple of things I wanted, I was wondering if the, do, the presentation that was made by the Phi Theta Kappa, do we need to, should we agendize something? Can we do, or has that already been built in somewhere?
No, that's really now staff's imperative just to make that happen.
Okay, awesome. And then other thing I was wondering about, just kind of a stick a pin in it kind of thing, since we were looking at the academic calendar, when I noticed that, you know, the may adjust to match in VUSD, blah, blah. In VUSD, the reason why they haven't done it yet is because they're looking at, you know, building in these snow days for, and I'm just wondering if that's something that the college would want to, I mean, we'll have another year to at least evaluate whether it would be useful to do that, but.
So for the academic calendar, is that what you're?
Right. For, not for this one, but future.
That's a negotiated item that, you know, Faye and we do, but we can certainly report back on that for next year.
I have, Mr. Chair, I have a, so next month, Napa Valley College Foundation Board Appointee, is that?
Yeah, we were tasked with the.
Next month. Okay. And then the other one that we've, we wait until it actually comes up, that's the CCCT elections, and it's kind of deer in the headlights, and we've had, I know Kyle, we've had trustee emeritus Charles Meng actually serve on the board, is our perceived benefit by the college. And then if that's agreed, that's something we ought to go forward with. Let's have sort of an organized campaign. I sent one out at last minute and et cetera, et cetera. I know Kyle has served or attempted as well to be elected. Is that something that, as a board, as a college, that we value as important going forward?
Representation by Northern California has always been a little light.
So rather than waiting till the last minute, should it be agendized in January, maybe a special meeting, in the special meeting and then in the January meeting?
There's a couple of ways we could do. I mean, one might go through the Ledge Committee.
Yes.
Subcommittee right away, start looking at, so we can get out ahead of it.
Yes.
So it doesn't come in as, like you're saying, last minute to this. So we can make sure, yeah, yes, please.
I have the paperwork, just received it this week sometime, maybe Wednesday, so.
For it already? I'll say we're already behind, there we go.
Yeah, so.
Already been emailed out too.
Okay.
So we can, I'm not sure how to do it, but we can get it out. It usually comes out as an agenda item, as an info, or, and then action takes place maybe in February.
We can absolutely send that, make sure that you all get it, and there's no, it doesn't have to go through this.
Then it sounds perfect for the Legislative Committee based on the.
Is anyone interested?
Board Chair.
You can't go there.
Can't go there now?
No.
But we can start, we can make sure that we talk about it and get it.
Future agenda item.
All right. Good. 17.3, Trustee and Board Chair Reports. Let's start over here. Trustee Dodd.
It's a very lovely foundation holiday party. Went to the cadet graduation last weekend. That's all I have to report.
Trustee Rios?
I don't have much of a report, but I'm sorry I missed the art show. It's just hard for me sometimes to get down to these things, so I really, when I saw it come up, well, we got emailed about it. I was really interested and excited to go, but I just couldn't make it, so that's it.
I was also at the foundation holiday kickoff. It got us in the mood. It was great to see the piano lively and singing and all that good stuff. I'm sorry I missed the police academy graduation. I was actually in American Canyon. We have an annual reindeer run the first Saturday of December, so I was there helping out. I'm looking forward this Saturday. I did get four coveted tickets to a Charlie Brown Christmas. I'm looking forward to going to that and really kicking off the holidays, so looking forward to the New Year as well. So happy holidays, everybody.
Attended the foundation event as well. I am sorry I missed the cadet graduation, but I did go to be with Jose Hernandez in the services for his late wife, so, but that's about it. Happy holidays to all of you. I'll be thinking of you and that certain island in the Mediterranean.
All right. Pablo?
Yeah, so recently, within these past two weeks, I've been attending a variety of celebrations, so including the foundation holiday event for the Black Student Union's EOPS, SHEP and SACNAS, as well as throughout this past semester for fall, I've been going to Leadership Academy with a few of my fellow student government members, faculty and staff. And last Friday, we had our Class A graduation, and so we are now certified leaders. Thank you. And the last thing I would like to say is wish the best of luck to all the students out there who are about to undergo finals, so keep it up, keep up the good work.
You too.
Trustee Baldini?
Just like to wish happy holidays to everyone here and not here, and special thanks to all those, the supporting cast. I know those that show up here and do the work, but also behind the scenes, Catherine and Kathy to deliver those cookies without even asking. I appreciate it. And then also to our Board Chair, Kyle Iverson, thank you for your leadership over the past year, and I wish you all again, happy holidays.
Thank you. Trustee Baker?
Well, I was sorry to have missed the de-stress day yesterday. But I went to the PSPS Town Hall that was put on here at NVC. It wasn't our event, but since we hosted it, I am passing on the thanks of Supervisor Padoza, who christened me as Catherine Baker. I'm okay with that. I liked Jennifer Dodd better, though. And I did make it to the faculty art show. I actually brought my son Ryan, and he got to draw on the wall, and we had a good time. I went to the foundation holiday party. I went to the first of the community forums on housing that we had in here, the police academy graduation. I was able to attend small class, but I always kind of liked the small classes because it's more intimate. I was able to pop into the classified staff holiday party. Was that yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. And then, let's see, gosh, that's it, but if you have time next weekend, or not this coming weekend, but the next one, the 21st and 22nd, there are still tickets available for the Nutcracker at Lincoln Theater, and there are at least two future NVC students that I know will be performing.
What's the date? Tell us the year.
21st and 22nd.
I was sorry to miss the foundation party and the cadet graduation. Took a little de-stress trip and played some very challenging golf courses in Arizona. I did not come back a better golfer. It's not very forgiving down there. And I just wanted to thank all you guys. It's been an honor and humbling experience to serve as chair. I had a little Joanne Bark tonight and figured to throw in for the second rotation, but I wish the best for our new Board Chair, Rosara, and our new Vice Chair, trustee Baldini, and look forward to a good year and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you. Yeah, I know, it's my last one. Let's go around, let's go. All right, so nobody wants to do closed session? Not ready to let go of the gavel?
We're good until midnight, the 31st.
All right. We do have our special meeting, 19.1, that's January 16th, and our regular meeting on the 23rd. Meeting's adjourned at 7:45.